And Mr. Silverman is going to be putting out some honey from his, um, from his own bee garden for, for the public if they would like.
We are recording and we are live.
Okay. So we're back. Again, congratulations, excuse me, everyone. Congratulations again to Councilmen Cohen and Hamer on their long service. And now we'll move on to Resolution 326, accepting the minutes of which day?
April 6, 2021 and April 20, 2021.
So from April of last year, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
I second it. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cobb?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Marin?
Yes.
Council President Rosenzweig?
Yes. Okay, so, um, so we actually have a very busy meeting tonight. Believe it or not, we're going to have six public sessions, because we have four ordinances to discuss and each one has a public hearing. Then we'll have a public hearing on the resolutions and then a public hearing at the very end. So, so for the ordinances, you know, when we open the public hearing, it's really just about that ordinance. So we have one on fire prevention, then handicap parking, and then one on the police department. I know some people might want to speak about that, so I'll highlight that when we get to it. And then another one about handicap parking. So we'll get, we'll get through these right now. So Ordinance 22-20, an ordinance amending Chapter 212 Fire Prevention of the Code of the City of Englewood, Section 212-16B, required inspections and fees. So the public hearing on the fire prevention ordinance is now open. So anyone from the public who wants to speak about the fire prevention ordinance, please come to the mic and you will be heard.
Raymond Diaz, 408 Shining Court. Just, uh, if someone could explain to me what specifically this is? Is it for existing facilities, residential, commercial, for new buildings going up? What is it specifically?
Sure. The, uh, this, this ordinance affects what's known as life hazard uses, so that would be schools, gas stations, nail salons, beauty salons, rental properties that are not owner-occupied, restaurants and warehouses. And I'd, I'd like to add that the, um, the, the last time that this ordinance was updated was 18 years ago, so. Okay, so the public hearing is now closed. Um, is there a motion to adopt Ordinance 22-20?
So move.
I second it. Any discussion amongst the council?
Yep.
Okay.
It's your night, go ahead. Um, I'm just a little concerned about the increases in the, the fees that are being charged. In one case, it's a, you know, double. And a number of them, you know, it's jumping, and I understand the 18 years, but, uh, people are just coming out of COVID and, you know, we haven't emerged from COVID yet and their businesses struggling and, uh, to have this amount of increase. And I'm not sure if everyone's taken a look at the, uh, the increases that, that are marked up, but, you know, to have $50 increases on some things and, you know, $300 increases on other things, uh, it just seems a little bit much, you know, all at one time. And, you know, I can support, you know, doing it in a gradual way, but I think this is, this is quite a bit for anybody to have to swallow.
Any other comment, Mr. Cobb?
I'd like to ask the city manager. Where, where did we get this pricing from?
That came?
Excuse me?
Uh, Mr. Cobb, you asked where the pricing came from?
Yes.
Yes, it came from, uh, the, our Fire Prevention Bureau and, and the Fire Department, but it's just-
Did, did we do any comparison with other municipalities and how they priced as well?
Uh, yes, we did. And we are, if, uh, there was a, there was a memo dated November 18th, um, that went, went to the coun, went to the council and it, it talks about some of our sister, sister municipalities, so, um, how we can, how we compare to those, those municipalities.
You know, the one thing is, is that, and I think Councilman Hamer mentioned that, you know, we just came out, we're coming out of COVID or we're still in COVID and we're dealing with all these challenges. And in some cases, to, to increase something, $300, um, I'm sure the business owners, residents who would be impacted by this wouldn't be hap, too happy to, uh, pay these numbers. And I think that we should take that into consideration in any increase that we do. What's the impact? And somebody should ask the question, what is the impact to the end user, um, with that? Because I think that people, we would get a lot of pushback if we ask that question.
Okay. I'd, um, like to point out, just scanning the list, it, it appears that the, um, the only increase that would be $300 is for all occupancies of factory use which are over 10,000 square feet, 10,000 square feet or greater. That was the only one that I saw on the list. That would go from a $600 fee to a $900 fee.
And we got, we got some that go to $200, $200 fees as well. 200, 150.
Yeah. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cobb?
No.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
I still don't think it's fair to put this much of an increase on anybody at this point in time and, uh, my vote is no.
Councilwoman Marin?
Yes.
Council President Rosenzweig?
Yes. So the ordinance passes. So now move on to Ordinance 22-21, um, ordinance establishing procedures for the application review and approval of on-street handicap parking in the city of Englewood. So the public hearing on this ordinance regarding handicap parking is now open. So anyone from the public who would like to address the council about this ordinance regarding handicap parking, um, please come to the microphone. So the public hearing on this ordinance is now closed. Um, do I have a motion for this to be adopted?
So move.
I second. Any discussion by the council?
Question. Would someone just explain what the process is for, uh, for getting handicap parking approval? So the public will know in a concise way.
So with this new process, there actually will be an application that anyone requesting on-street handicap parking would have to fill out. It would require some forms to be submitted, just proof that you have the handicap placard or, or, and a couple of other things and that you live at that address. That form will be reviewed by a committee that this ordinance also forms. It would be the city manager, um, the chief of police or designee, and the director of public works, uh, just to expedite the process so that whoever needs the, um, the, the handicapped spot will have a quicker turnaround instead of waiting for an ordinance which takes two months. Twice a year, it will be brought to the council for ordinance adoption, but immediately it'll be by resolution and then to ratify that by ordinance twice a year.
Would all of the applications come from the clerk's office?
I, I believe they're going to the city manager's office since they take care of all the permit parking in town, so it'll be another, um, thing for them to do. It's an annual renewal process. There's two types of handicap parking signs. There's one where you don't pay a fee and you get the sign in front of your house, but anyone with a handicap placard can park there. And the other type is where you pay an annual fee and then, um, it's your personal place to parks. No one else is allowed to park there for the handicap parking. And that's also an annual fee. So it, it helps, it'll help the residents tremendously and also put some kind of order. Because it's annual, we'll also be able to review the applications and see if anyone lives there, uh, the person who required the handicap sign still lives there or not. Uh, so it keeps better track of, uh, system which, uh, unfortunately we don't have right now.
Last question. How, how is this going to be communicated out? Because there are a number of people who do have them and a number of people who request them on a somewhat regular basis.
There will be letters going out every year for the ones that we're aware of. They will definitely get letters. I believe the street scan process, we're waiting on that report. That's also supposed to tell us who has a sign up currently that we're not aware of. Uh, they weren't all done by ordinance. They were just, signs were just put up. So we'll, this'll, between both systems, we'll be, have a better idea of what's going on around town. Sorry. Oh, also Nixel Facebook and, um, what was the last one?
Website.
And the website will also, so as, whatever way we can communicate that's available to us will be communicated.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the council? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cobb?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Marin?
Yes.
Council President Rosenzweig?
Yes, so that passes. Uh, so now we'll go on to Ordinance 22-22. This is an ordinance amending, um, Chapter 61-2A pertaining to the composition of the Table of Organization for the City of Englewood Police Department. Uh, so this is the ordinance about the police department. So if anyone from the public, uh, would like to comment on this ordinance, uh, the public hearing is now open and you can be heard.
This is 22. Diaz, 408 Shining Court. We had a resolution and, well, the meeting is similar to that from what you're going to have another captain, lieutenant.
Could you please talk into the mic? I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. That we had another meeting prior to this where there was a resolution, I think we tabled it. Does it have to do with the additional captain, lieutenant, sergeant, and a police officer? Is this similar to that? Because I really don't understand it when you say composition of table. What is that in, in simpler terms? How can you express that? Is it going to affect, how is it going to affect us, the people who live here? Is it, we're going to pay more money or something? What's going on? Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for your question, Mr. Diaz. Previously, the, uh, the council had authorized a, uh, a study of, of the schedule for the police department. Perhaps that's what you were, you were, um, referring to. So, uh, that was, that was authorized over the summer. There was a study done and the marching orders were if, if it made sense to have a change in schedule and it was going to be cost neutral to the city, then a change in schedule could be considered. So that was done. The council approved the change in the schedule starting for calendar year 2023. And so the ta, this, this ordinance or the Table of Organization follows, follows that because there's going to be a, a change in the, um, the number of squads, if you will. And so this, this, this makes sure that the Table of Organization is, is updated so that it, it can follow a 12-hour shift, basically. Anyone else from the public? All right, so the public hearing is now closed. Uh, do I have a motion for this ordinance to be adopted?
So move.
Second.
All right, so any discussion by the council?
Yep. So, you know, we're, we're asking to increase lieutenants, sergeants, and we say no more than 65 police officers. My concern is, is that I'd like to know what the diversity is at the lieutenant, sergeant, and at the patrol officers level. Because I know for a fact that there is no diversity at the lieutenant level, currently speaking. So when we want to make changes and we want to add, does diversity play into the formula or not? I just want to, I want somebody to answer that question for me.
I couldn't quite hear.
Hmm?
I couldn't quite hear what you said.
What I'm saying is, is that currently, and these are the, these are the areas where, or these are the positions that run the department I'm talking about, you're asking for, to increase these numbers, lieutenant, sergeant, and you're also saying no more than 65 police officers. I'm saying, what is the diversity and do we, uh, do we include diversity when we want to increase our numbers?
Right.
Because there, there, there is a lack of diversity at one of those levels and that's my concern.
Okay. Please. Yeah. Valid question, Councilman Cobb. The way I can answer that is that in, earlier in 2022, the Bergen County Prosecutor's Office in conjunction with my predecessor authorized a promotional process for sergeant and lieutenant and captain. So that process was followed. There's a, there's a confirmed list of, of candidates that took the, that took the test and passed the test. So any kind of promotions would come off, would come off of those lists. And there's on, there's the, uh, I, I should have brought my folder. I left, I left it on my desk, but there are, there are, um, there are diversity statistics for the police department that are on the, that are on the website. It breaks it down by, um, by our department. It shows it through, uh, how, how we rank with the city, with, with Bergen County. And there's also a statistic at, at the bottom for our command staff.
Mr. Hoffman, I think you didn't understand what I said.
I didn't.
There, there is no diversity at the lieutenant level right now. Let's talk factually. That's what I'm saying. How do we ensure that we have diversity, that our police department looks like this community? That's what I'm saying. That's all. How do we do that? We're asking the people, we're asking to extend or e, e, expand these roles. Okay, that's fine. But what I'm saying is how do we determine diversity? And, and I'm not talking about just color. I'm talking about females. I'm talking about Latinos. I'm talking about the whole melting pot. That is the charge of the leadership of the city of Englewood. I don't care what somebody has on a website from the county or whatever. I think that we have an obligation to make sure that we have a diverse police department that represents this, this city of Englewood. That's, that's all I'm saying. And if we don't, then we have to take these opportunities to make sure that it is that way. That, that's all I'm saying. And when it slants, whatever way it is, we have an obligation to slant it back to make sure that it represents all of them. Male, female, black, white, Hispanic, all, all across the spectrum should be a part of this department because it, this is what, this is what this city looks like. So that's what I'm saying. How do we ensure that we keep that balance? And we balance that, you know, which is a sensitive thing to do, but it's the right thing to do. That, that's all I'm saying. Do we take that into consideration when we're, when we're making decisions like that? Is that something that says, okay, we've included this, we've done whatever we have? If we have the people that are in those positions? And the final, my final comment is, you, you talked about a list, so are you, are you alluding to there are going to be promotions or there are not going to be promotions off the list? Because if we expand this, then we're talking about promoting people, I would hope.
Well, what, what I'm saying is that there is already in place, there was a process for, uh, for, for people to sign up for the exam, for taking the exam. There's, there was a vetting process that was approved by the Bergen County Prosecutor's Office. And when the time comes to make promotions, um, it, there, there are, um, both competent and diverse, diverse members of our police department that are, um, that, that are eligible for promotion, so. Mr. Cohen?
Yes. Yeah, I would say a few things to that.
Yeah, and part, part of it, I'm, you know, this, there's, there's a list, but it's also, it's also a personnel matter, so I'm, I'm not, um, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not at liberty to, you know, to, to talk about specifics, but I, I can, I can say that we have a list that's valid for three, for three years. And, um, there are, there are qualified people on the list that meet the, meet the criteria that you, that you have, you have outlined. There are, but I, you know, I don't want to say much more than that.
No, but that, my, my, my point is, I just asked the question and I'm not asking for specifics. I said, if you expand the list, is it your intentions to promote somebody? Is it, that, that's what I'm saying. I don't need to know who, what, where, when, and how, but I'm saying, if that's the case, will that happen? One. Number two, if we have, if it, do we look at it and say, how does this mix work here in the city of Englewood? That's all I'm saying. That's where I would expect you, the chief, and that leadership team to say, hey, this is what we need to do. That, you, you, you're the professionals here who, who are running that department, just like any other department, I would expect to have diversity where the opportunity is. And if we have an opportunity to, to do those things, we should do that so it represents the city and people see that that's what we're doing. You know, that draws people to want to wo, work at Englewood. That draws people that want to live in Englewood. These are all, these are all elements that should be considered when we're talking about employment in the city of Englewood. And, and that's all I'm saying. Because if it doesn't fit and we have an opportunity to fix it, why don't we just do that? That, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. Dr. Rosenzweig? Well, Mr. Cohen, uh-
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I, I would say a few things to that. One of the things that, um, you alluded to was the fact that you wanted to make sure that, that the confidence is there in the leadership team to recognize the demographics on the ground in Englewood and to make sure that it's recognized when promotions happen. So the first question to me is, is do we trust our leadership to understand those issues and to make sure to do right by those issues? So when I look at our city manager, we just hired him six months ago, or three months ago, I forgot the exact amount, five months ago.
Five and a half.
I mean, it's, I, first time he's not telling me how many weeks ago, so I guess it's gotten, it'll be a little bit, you know, longer. But the reality is, is we hired a new city manager because we chose him, because we have faith in his regard to understand those issues. When I look at our police department, when I look at our, our chief, you know, when I look at Tom Greeley sitting over there, Tom Greeley is at these council meetings. He hears these conversations. And when he doesn't come to these meetings, he's watching it on YouTube. Uh, you know, and when you have chiefs and they're, and the people underneath them who are watching council meetings, who are watching these deliberations, who are involving themselves and understanding the fabric of what makes the city tick, uh, those are the kind of people that we want at that table making those kind of decisions. So to me, the first question of, you know, how are those things going to get, how are those issues going to get, um, how we can have the confidence to ensure that diversity issues are understood by the people that are empowered in the city to make them? Well, I'm confident that the people that are in those positions as, as of this day, that they are people who take the time and the energy to ensure that issues of diversity are paramount, you know, to give the residents of the city of Englewood, the police force, the fire department, the, whatever staff it might be, uh, the reflection of the people of Englewood in the way that, that to the best of their ability. Uh, so then the other question becomes, well, how do we make sure, long-term, that first of all, we understand, as you said, the diversity of the city? You know, our city has gotten increasingly diverse throughout new populations coming in and, and making our city, you know, all cities continue to grow and continue to expand and continue to change. Uh, and in order to make sure that ultimately, when people want to be promoted to those positions that we're looking at now, we also have to make sure that our hiring process makes sure that people are hired in diverse capacities reflect the city because they can't actually move up if they're not in the force to begin with. And one of the things that we've worked very hard on over the last couple of years is ensuring that that is the case. Ensuring to the best of our ability, because it's not entirely within our hands, we have to have candidates, uh, that once they're recruited, that they have to apply. They have to take the tests. They have to pass the tests. So, but within the capacity that we have the opportunity to, to make those determinations, we have done better than, and, and than what's been in the past. We've taken energy to make sure that we've done that and we've made that a priority. And once again, we've communicated that priority to all those decision makers, such as the chief, such as Mr. Hoffman, and to whatever other departments there. So can we say, you know, so when you ask also, are we intending to elevate or promote people, uh, in general, when you open up new opportunities, other opportunities present exactly that. They present opportunities. So it presents us chances to see who in the ranks exist that, that fulfill those requirements, fulfill the requirements that are necessary also, but it gives more people, more individuals who have served the city, the opportunity and the chance to shine and to, and to deserve and to garner those promotions. And so when I look at this right now, i, if, if the objective here is to increase diversity within our ranks, which I think it is, and I think we all can agree on that, and I don't think there's any dispute in that, the questions have to be, do we have a hiring process to make sure people are there? The answer is, according to the restraints of state law, we've done everything in our power to make sure that's the case. Do we have the people in place to make those determinations that understand and take the time to understand diversity in our city and our city council and in our policymaking? I think we do. So is the system perfect? Of course not. Is it always going to be exact? Of course not. But are we doing as a policymaking body the best we possibly can under the circumstances provided by state statute and by the opportunities that we have here? I, I, I think, I think we're doing a pretty good job.
Any other comment from the council?
Yeah, if I can, Dr.
Yeah, thank you.
I had the privilege of serving under three black chiefs, Chief Mosley, Chief Bowman, Chief Sufferin. I look at the statistics, but I also look as I walk the streets. Now it's a little colder to walk with the opportunities that each of these very distinguished gentlemen provided the youth of our community to park a car on a street in their ward where they live to show people that they can come up through the ranks and lead this department if they were so inclined and wanted to. If you look at the statistics, overall, we've had chiefs and deputy chiefs that were white, that were black, and it cycles through the system. And I think you coined it well, Councilman Cohen, that we have professionals at city hall that we trust and that we have a system that's diverse enough in of itself. I don't hear complaints from the Jewish community that there are no Jews in the police department. And it's not because Jews aren't applying and the Jewish community isn't short on complaining. It's because they're satisfied with the decisions, with the policing, with the diversity of the department. Overall, the African-American community in Englewood is about 26.60%. We have 20% in the police department. In Hispanic community, 28% Englewood residents. We have 28% in our police department. The Asian community, which is growing now significantly, is about 9%. We have 1% in our police department. I swore the gentleman in. In our leadership, we have five sergeants that are white, three that are black, four that are Spanish. In lieutenants, we have three that are white, one is black and one is Spanish. We have one captain, um, who's Spanish. We have, again, vacancies that need to be filled and we have to look not just in the form, and I know this comes from a real significant concern, but I think Englewood in many ways has graduated and we have, because of the policies and the policing and the needs of this community, refined our system so that really it would be very hard, not just for prejudice to root itself, but for anything less than inclusiveness and diversity playing a significant role. But the most important role that should take place in the leadership, whether it's lieutenant, captain, chief, deputy chief, has to do with that person's own ability, the way the rank and file look at them, and ultimately their record of, of work. Our current chief, I am most impressed with because of the intergenerational experience. His father served our department. Not everything fits into the kind of graphs that we want, but you have to look at these things and wonder how close to perfect are we? And while we make mistakes along the way, there are enough failsafes in the system to make sure that we're not going to blow this important element that you so coined as well. Thank you.
Comment? Uh, I, I think-
Uh, I, I think the numbers start to tell the story, but if you look at the demographics of the police department, uh, over the last couple of three years, relative to how it is now, I think there have been changes in the diversity that, that we're speaking of, or some of us are speaking about, uh, is not being achieved in the way that it can be achieved or should have been achieved. Uh, basically, uh, it's not quite a purge, but it's pretty close. And the, uh, representation at the higher ranks in the administration of the police department, you know, does not look like the city. And it looks less like the city than it used to. So, uh, if you bring in diversity at the lowest levels, then that means that throughout someone's career, they have an opportunity to, uh, advance, but that's a generational type endeavor. So, um, you know, I, I mentioned to you at the last meeting that I want you to listen to what everybody says and then watch what they do. This is an example. Watch what gets done. Thank you.
All right, roll call, please.
So moved.
It was already moved.
Oh.
Uh, Councilman Cobb?
No.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
My vote is no.
Councilwoman Marin?
Yes.
Council President Rosenzweig?
Uh, yes. So that ordinance passes. So now we're on to the fourth ordinance of the night, ordinance two-two dash two-three. Uh, this is another ordinance amending, um, so an ordinance amending chapter twenty-five, article fifteen of the code on this, of the city of Englewood, handicap parking. Um, uh, and Bill, just in anticipation of the public, how is this different from the previous ordinance? And how do these complement each other?
I think this establishes the fees, right? Yeah, it's...
Okay. So this one establishes fees. Uh, so the public hearing on the second handicap parking ordinance is now open. Anyone from the public who would like to address the council regarding this will now be heard. As the cake goes away. Okay. Uh, so we now close the public hearing on this ordinance. Is there a motion for this to be adopted?
So move.
Am I seconded? Any discussion from the council?
Just one question. Uh, what, what are the fees currently? And, you know, I see the fees in, listed in the ordinance, but what are, what are the fees, if there are any, currently?
Well, currently, there are no fees because there was no ordinance establishing this type of system.
The user might, so everyone else can hear.
Uh, currently, there are no fees because there was no application process established to have people have, uh, personalized handicap spots. Uh, the fee will only be for one, for the residents who request a personalized spot for themselves. If they don't want that, then it's free.
Yeah, I did catch the last part. What'd you say?
Uh, if they don't want a personalized spot, but just a sign in front of their house, then there's no charge.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, roll call.
Councilman Cobb?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hamer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Marin?
Yes.
Council President Rosenzweig?
Yes. So that ordinance passes. Obviously, we have no ordinances for first reading. Um, so now we're moving on to the agenda items. Um, so our, uh, we have fourteen resolutions on the agenda, um, three-twenty-seven through three-forty. Um, now, um, do we need to make a, there's a typo on one of them, you told me.
Correct. On the, uh, on, on the budget transfer res- resolution, there is a, um, the, the total should be six-hundred-eighty-four thousand for both, both, uh...
So which ordinance number is this?
Both columns. No, this is for resolution...
Three-three-three.
And the difference, the, uh, the BCUA solid waste that should be, the, the transfer into should be one hundred thou- one hundred forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. So, um, in the resolution, it says one hundred thousand, but it should have been one hundred thou- one, one hundred forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
All right, so we'll be voting on the...
Is that solid waste or lead disposal?
Oh, that was solid waste, Councilman.
Correct.
So please be aware...
Yeah, we received some bills from the, from the West Coast.
When you vote on this, you're voting on the, um, corrected resolution. All right, so now we will open up the public comments on these fourteen agenda items. There'll be another public session, um, at the end about, uh, any issue.
Good evening, Council. Peter Jansen, five-eighty-nine Richland Terrace. On question on three-two-nine, uh, the one-twenty-five Madison Avenue, could you please describe what is the pre-existing non-conforming condition and the terms of the license agreement that's described only briefly?
Are you up on that?
Sure. Um, so with, with respect to this subject property, it's at the corner of Starling and Madison Avenue, there's an existing retaining wall there that has been there for several years. Uh, I don't know exactly when it was constructed, but some time ago, and it's, but it is actually in the city right-of-way. Um, the council for the owner of the property had approached the city about permitting a licensing agreement, which allowed, would allow that to remain there, um, uh, for the time being. Um, and, and the agreement, as we've done in other situations, where we have, for example, a few years ago, in more an industrial area, there's an old property with parking spaces, part of them actually were in the right-of-way. We, we did a license agreement for that to permit that to continue. Um, this is the, along the same vein, um, if they wanted, they would do other improvements or something, it has to go through an ordinary course to the board or what have you, what planning board. Um, and this would provide also that if anything happened on that property in the right-of-way, they would have to indemnify the city. Um, and there's also a revocation period in the event that the city in the future needed it for some type of public purpose. So that, that's the purpose behind this.
Thank you.
Hi.
I represent the owners of the property. Just want to, uh, clarify that the, uh, this wall has been there since, um, the owners purchased the property, which was back in nineteen-seventy-nine, so it's, it was probably there before, so, uh, you know, it's not, it's certainly pre-existing, but we're in time.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, anyone else from the public like to address the council regarding these resolutions? All right, thank you. So we'll close the public session on the resolutions. Um, are there any resolutions that anyone from the council would like to pull from the consent agenda? Otherwise, we'll vote on them and block. All right. So do I have a motion to approve resolutions three-twenty-seven through three-forty?
So move.
I second it? Any discussion from the... Okay, so roll call, please.
Councilman Cobb?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Marin?
Yes.
Council President Rosenzweig?
Yes. Okay, so we now move on to bills and claims. Um, resolution three-forty-one. Um, do I have a motion to approve bills and claims?
So move.
I second it? Any comment, any questions from the council regarding bills and claims? All right, seeing none. Um, roll call, please.
Councilman Cobb?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Marin?
Yes.
Council President Rosenzweig?
Uh, yes. Uh, so now we have communications from the governing body and city manager.
Good evening, everybody. Um, as we enter the holiday season, I want to wish everyone a joyous Hanukkah, a happy Kwanzaa, Merry Christmas, and a healthy and a happy New Year. No matter where you're celebrating or what you're celebrating, we extend our best wishes to you and your families. Please celebrate responsibly to ensure the holidays remain festive, drive safely, and with expected bad weather, if you're traveling later this week, don't drink and drive, and if you're sick, be careful with your travel plans, attending large gatherings, as we do have, uh, cases of COVID circulating and the RSV virus and other strains of flu, which have led to spikes in hospitalizations, especially among children. Uh, City Hall will be closed, uh, at two PM on Friday, December twenty-third, will be reopening next Tuesday, December twenty-seven. Uh, this past Sunday, the city held its Hanukkah menorah lighting, celebrating the first night of Hanukkah, a tremendous community event. I'd like to thank our city manager, city council, police, fire, and other employees for helping put together a lovely event, the Chabad of Englewood, the rabbis who participated, the school choirs who performed, and the Englewood Fire Department for coming through with their ladder truck for the dreidel and gelt drop. Uh, we had a wonderful Christmas, a tree lighting, uh, that was held earlier this month. I was unfortunately out of town and couldn't attend. I was turning a tree on actually in Greece, Athens, with a mayor's conference on antisemitism. Um, it was a festive event, another beautiful event for the Englewood, uh, community here. Thank you again for all who participated. Uh, Englewood Recreation and the Christmas event last week, the city recreation parks held their soulful Christmas family celebration at the McKay Ice Rink. Thank you all who made this possible for providing a fantastic event for Englewood's families, including our city employees, Janelle Johnston and the Popp program. My wife and I were able to help, uh, get a big supply of toys. We hope to be able to do this every year. Uh, there was a space holiday event where Englewood families had a chance, uh, and had a special holiday treat courtesy of a local business, Space Events, who opened their doors along with, again, the Popp program, uh, with this time pitch-in foundation run by New York Yankees legend C.C. Sabathia and his wife Amber, who were also in attendance. It was a great time for our children, great gifts given to our community. I was honored to present keys to the city to both Mr. and Mrs. Sabathia, Janelle Johnston from Popp and space owners Elvira and James Grau. Thank you for helping make this special time for all our Englewood families. The PBA toy drive was very successful this afternoon. After conducting their holiday drive and collecting, they distributed more than four-hundred-and-fifty children today in our city toys for the holiday. Englewood Police also participated in Shop With A Cop program through the Greater Bergen Community Action, helping bring holiday joy to even more families in our community. We appreciate their commitment to Englewood's children and the every resident of our city, and are especially thankful for their time spent from their own families, looking after our own. Uh, those who were not mentioned, I know that there have been and will be many holiday event programs run by our churches, synagogues, and other community organizations. We have a Buddhist, uh, temple now in Englewood also. I apologize that I can't name everyone, but I do want to thank every single person and organization in our city that puts in their time, effort, and contributions to make sure all of our children have a hap- happy holiday season. I want to also congratulate the Dwight Morrow High School students who received good news on an early holiday gift on instant decision day, where Englewood Public School District announced many were accepted to colleges, as early decision and more than seven-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars in scholarships were awarded to members of our class two thousand twenty-three. For those students who didn't get the news they wanted this time, don't worry, keep working hard, and keep applying, this was just the first round. Congratulations are also in order to the two Board of Education members, Dr. Suzanne Mullins and Scott Redeen. Both are recently honored by our school district for their dedication and service. I want to end my own thanks for their work on behalf of our students, teachers, and our school employees. And finally, it was recently announced the NGIT, um, excuse me, New Jersey Transit has been awarded a grant of almost six-hundred-thousand dollars from the Federal Transit Administration to study a possible nine-mile extension of the existing Hudson-Bergen Light Rail, which could culminate at Englewood Hospital. There's been much discussion of a rail line to Englewood over the years and a variety of opinions. I would ask that our city manager and council president make strong efforts to allow different stakeholders in Englewood to be part of this conversation and provide the community with regular updates as the study progresses. We want to make sure that environmental, safety, economic noise, and aesthetic considerations are made, along with the immediate intent of increasing transit options for commuters. Let's make sure that Englewood has our input to the process in making this important decision. Uh, on a sweet spot, and with the environmental commission in mind, Jack Silverman has left several jars of honey that is homegrown in Englewood. Um, I believe he's outside packaging, uh, and people are welcome to go see, uh, Jack for a little sweetness on the way out. And it's with that message that I also bid farewell again to Michael Cohen and Wayne Hamer, uh, two gentlemen of the first order, uh, who's dedicated themselves as if this were their families. Um, there's nothing less than love in the returned phone calls, the emails, the years of concern, uh, and I've seen the emails as recent as yesterday from you, Michael, and Wayne, earlier in the week, and a phone call with the CBD issues that we have in the Central Business District and so forth. It's genuine, it's there, and you're setting deep shoes for your successors to fill. We wish you Godspeed and good health and your families too. Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Cobb?
I want to speak out of order. I want to speak just before Councilman Hamer.
Okay. Mr. Cobb?
Okay. Sure. Uh, yeah, before I get into the other, um, quick remarks that I, that I just wanted to make, um, you know, I, I wanted to also, I, I know that, uh, and I thank our council president for, um, conducting a moment of silence earlier in this mo- in this meeting, um, for Elaine Mailer. Um, yeah, she was taken from us way too soon. She was a friend. You know, she was, you know, uh, you know, uh, you know, it, you know, some people you just know light up a room every time you see them. And I'll tell you, I don't know if I'd be here if it wasn't for her, for all the times that she was there supporting me, encouraging me, um, you know, being there for me, letting me know of every problem that we need to work on. Um, you know, and it, and it's, it's just such an incredible tragedy and, and, um, you know, I, I would just ask this council, you know, in the new year, once the time is appropriate and enough time has passed for, um, you know, if you can do some sort of resolution or something honoring her and her family, um, and showing her family and her young children that the city is there for them, um, you know, at the right time, I'd ask that the city can please do that in the coming year. You know, um, with that, um, yeah, just on, on to other, other, um, you know, when everything else seems to be, you know, so less important after the gravity of that, but, um, but I, I try to follow, um, our, our mayor in thanking, uh, the police and fire departments for the toy drive today. Um, you know, I couldn't believe I pulled up to, to go there, and you actually, you see the line of cars, uh, all the way around Dwight Morrow, all the way onto Nickobokka Avenue, um, you know, hundreds and hundreds of people. And not just one or two, but you're talking four, five, six hundred people. You know, and then when toys were running low, you know, the PBA, you have Ron Lane here, you know, they made sure to get gift cards for additional children, just to make sure that everybody had a good holiday. Um, you know, it's funny, when I was there, I made sure that, you know, we took a picture with, we took some pictures with the fire department and the police department and everybody there, because I don't think that our city really knows the, just the, the amount of dedication that our fire and police have for this town. To see what I saw, and see what we see every year, when you guys, you know, I know you only have, you have a few of you here today, um, but to see the dedication, to see the joy on the kids' faces as they pull up and the bags of toys are given, and to see just the energy, uh, even the light, the lit-up truck that you had outside to make it festive. Um, you know, Englewood's lucky to have you guys, and, uh, you know, and one thing I said to everybody there, and I say to you now again, is, you know, we don't say often enough how much we appreciate all these kind of things that you do, so in case you're wondering, I'm saying it now. We appreciate it. Thank you. Um, you know, also, um, you know, the, the mayor and I had the opportunity and the privilege to, uh, represent the city of Englewood this past week, um, at the Governor Murphy's Hanukkah party, um, down in Drumtwackett. So, um, you know, as anybody, anybody who's been to Drumtwackett knows, got to have dedication to go with the, what, fourteen hours of traffic and a hundred thousand miles to get there back and forth, but, uh, the mayor and I made sure to, uh, make, represent Englewood proud, so, um, it was great being there. was great being there. I see also, you know, tonight, you know, as my last meeting, you know, one of the institutions that I know I, from this, from this day is mentioned many, many a time, but I just want to recognize, you know, the leadership of the Shiva Orseemekh that's here, such an incredible institution to our city and to our town, you know, and I thank them, I thank you both for being here tonight. The amount, the amount of effort that the kids from that, from your school bring to the city, the smiles, the, you know, you don't even realize a lot of the little things that when you serve and have the privilege to serve in this capacity, you see, but, you know, the basketball and baseball games between, you know, the yeshiva and whether it's our DPW or our police or our fire, you know, the kind of things that really bring community together that collectively everybody thinks about. You know, those are the things that make Englewood special, it's those little things. And I just really appreciate all of your efforts in making sure to understand and to make sure your students understand what it is to be part of a community and how special you, what you add to their lives and to all of our lives. So thank you for that. You know, and, you know, one of the things that I didn't have a chance, I didn't do when I was speaking earlier this evening was with my son, who's now actually playing on his computer that he got for Hanukkah, so he's behaving now and quiet. My wife was chasing him out the door, so I didn't get a chance to thank her properly, you know, for putting up with, you know, twelve years of this. You know, you know, everything from, you know, being here constantly on Tuesday nights, being here for special meetings, being here for budget meetings, coming, you know, and then kind of taking over our kitchen during COVID to have, to have us on, on screens, you know, and then for all of you watching, you know, my kids behind me going at the refrigerator when we told not to go and get it before anyway, so you probably all got a bird's eye view of each of my kids. But, you know, but honey, really, thank you so much for putting up with this, for letting me, you know, serve Englewood all these years and for being by my side and for, you know, really, you know, being there, you know, throughout. I couldn't have done it without you, and as everybody here saw tonight definitively, without somebody helping me with Jack, there's no way I could be at these meetings. So, you know, so hopefully, you know, like I said earlier, you know, my, my almost sixteen-year-old was, you know, Jack's age when I first started on this council, so hopefully Jack, you know, as, well, actually, he was at one other council meeting when he was a baby, but hopefully he'll remember this and recognize the importance of public service and what we all do here. So really, thank you to everybody. You know, just once again, thank you to everybody, you know, up here. Thank you to everybody for coming to meetings, for supporting me. You know, I see some of my, you know, some people who are my biggest fans throughout the years, whether it's Gabriel Boosbee here or Fred Horowitz, Zainan Anasty, and, you know, see Joe Hoyall back there and so many others who've just really been there throughout the years, and if I forgot anybody, I apologize. But, you know, it's a team effort. We make this city better together. And, you know, we've gone through all kinds of crazy times, but at the end of the day, we're here to make Englewood better and we're here to, to work on behalf of the quality of life for every single resident of the city. So it's been an honor, it's been a privilege. So to the residents of the second ward, the residents of the city, thank you so much for allowing me to show all of my children the importance of public service, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to serve, serve you and to be there for you and to do my part to make Englewood and our community a better place. Thank you.
Counselor Warren Maron?
Okay. As the second year of my term comes to an end, I would like to thank Englewood for affording me the privilege of serving you. I would like to thank Ken Rosenzweig for leading this council during our very, very productive two thousand and twenty-two year. We were fortunate to find and hire our new city manager, Bob Hoffman, and pass numerous ordinances that will help our city run more smoothly. Our surplus account has increased even as we have added more police to our department. We have new police and fire chiefs that we can be proud of. I will end with wishing all a happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, to all my wonderful fellow Englewoodians. Thank you.
Mr. Cobb?
Good evening, and thank you for coming out tonight. I would just like to talk about a few things before I let Councilman Hamer close here on his chapter. This year, there were a lot of things that went on with this council. There were a lot of things that went on and a lot of back and forth and agreement, but what I remind everybody is, we took an oath to serve the residents of the city of Englewood. And I think that going forward, we need to be reminded that we take an oath to serve the residents of the city of Englewood. We need to listen to the people, the residents of the city of Englewood, and what their concerns are, and give them the opportunity to, when they come to mic, to answer their questions. Because recently, I feel that a number of calls where people were not happy that they didn't have the opportunity to get answers, and I think that we owe that to them in some format and some style, to respond to their questions. Because if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be sitting up here, because they cast the votes to put you in these seats. So the least we could do is return the favor in terms of responding to them, because anybody who comes out at night is making an effort to come out tonight or any night to a council meeting out of their very busy schedule, so we should really respect what they're doing. The, the last meeting we had here was a dark meeting, the last council meeting. And as somebody who was born and raised in the city of Englewood, I would hope that we don't have to go there again, and that before it gets dark, we call timeout and we address the issues that we have, because the residents deserve better. I would like to send my condolences to the Jones family, to Ms. Colleen Jones, who recently passed away to her husband Roger, her nieces, nephews, goddaughters. She was a fabric of the community of Englewood, born and raised here and lived eighty-nine strong years. The second person is Marcia Beckham Watson, another person who was a fabric of this community, gone too soon, gone too soon, but these are people who were the fabric. They were born and raised here, decided to raise their families here. Now they will be missed by their loved ones. Next, I would just like to thank, and the journey I had on this council so far for seven years has been one of interest. And the one thing that I will tell you, and I said this earlier, was that I've been able to, obviously, right, I think since I started, the two constants were Michael Cohen and Councilman Hamer when I started on this council. But I would say to Councilman Hamer that, you know, many of the things that I think people don't understand or don't know what you did, and I'm not slighting anybody else, but I'm going to talk about Parkview and Rock Creek. Councilman Hamer was council president. He led the charge to get seventy-five more years of affordable housing at Rock Creek and Parkview, with also thirteen million dollars in renovations were done to those two properties. That's, that's, that's big. That, that is big. You're talking about seventy-five more years. Councilman Hamer is also sitting on the SID, Special Improvement District, and he started them and developed the budget for them to bring to the council so they can start to execute their plan for downtown. And as I see Adam Brown sitting out in the audience, he is one of the people who got us involved in the city, which is important. And these are just some of the contributions that he has made, but more importantly, I think the biggest contribution he's made is how he conducted himself, and I said this earlier, as a councilperson, always even keeled, even when he didn't agree. So, and we had, this week, we got in a pack of the email from Mr. Bailey's secretary, how to decorum, how we should act in the council meeting, an ordinance that was struck in two thousand and thirteen. Because people watch who we are. So we can disagree respectfully, but the facts will play out. And as Councilman Hamer said earlier, listen to what they say, but watch how they vote. So it's important that Englewood, we have to move Englewood forward, and we have to decide as individuals whether we want power or we want progress. Power is, is a single thing. Progress is inclusive of everybody. So if we want progress, that means all of us will participate and all of us will reap the benefits of whatever we accomplish here in this experiment called Englewood. We're not going to always agree, but the one thing we can agree to is to make this place better. We're not going to agree how we get there, but as you've seen a little bit tonight, there are different views on things. But the reality is, we all got eyes. We can view it how we want to and process how we want to. I challenge everybody to hold the elected officials accountable. It's not about how many pitches you take, it's how about how many policies you pass and how you make a difference and how you understand what's going on. I've had the pleasure this, the last four days, to participate in a number of holiday parties, if you call it that, where, for example, Shiloh Amy Zion Church gave out over four-hundred toys, and many of the people here that are in the audience donated to kids. I think a lot of people have tried to make a difference. That's what we're saying, and that's what we're seeing here in this holiday season. But let's not try to make a difference just in the holiday season. Let's try to make a difference all year long. There are a lot of people out here who are struggling, who are hurting, struggling in silence because of pride. You can't blame them for that, but it's our job to recognize that. You know, we have homeless, we have homeless people sleeping in Depot Square Park. You want to talk about Englewood, we have, we have a homeless problem. How do we fix that? We can't move forward unless we bring those folks with us. And it's all about the people, and it's what the people want. I urge all of you to urge your friends, your neighbors, to participate in this city. Come to council meetings, find out what's going on, and decide how you can make a difference. You've made, you've made an investment in this community, so get a return on your investment. I think people need to understand that, you know, a lot of the things that we want, we all want the same thing, but it's how we say it. You know, so I think that it's important. I also want to say to the newly elected officials that are coming onboard on the third, have your eyes open and listen and make your own decisions, be independent, do your own homework, because that'll be important. That's what the people are going to expect from you. Because I, I think this town is at a crossroads in a lot of different ways. I, I will just tell you that somebody being sixty-five years old, I was born and raised here, my mother was born and raised here, I'm a third-generation person, so I've seen a few things here, and I see the elements that are happening, and I, and I hope that we can avoid some of the things that are happening and moving forward, because truly this place could be a good place to live. That's why people invested in it, but there's a lot of work that has to be done. So with a closing, Mr. Hamer, I know your remarks will cover a lot, sixteen years of contributions to the city of Englewood, and hopefully you will respond upon them. I know you're kind of shy away from that, but I think you guys, when you leave the council, you should have the opportunity to brag about what you did, because I don't think people understand that, what it is and the time and the sacrifice that's both of you guys, that you have to take that upon yourself, and it's okay, because it's your, your night and your floor, and both of your families have, you know, have been on this ride with you. You know, when you have to change your vacation, or you have to change something, or you have to go to school for a kid at night or something like that, people need to understand, it's just not as so easy as to sit up here and look at it. There are other challenges that come along with that. So as I said to you and Mr. Cohen, thank y'all for doing that. And as I said to Mr. Cohen, we agree, and he knows that, and we disagree, and he knows that as well. But, Mr. Hamer, thank you. Hopefully you stay around, because some of the stuff that you were working on is institutional knowledge that you're taking away. Sometimes that knowledge transfer, we have to get it before it goes. So, but Valerie, thank you for lending and branding, for lending them and letting them hang out with me and Adam Brown at night, but it's your turn, sir. Thank you so much. Showtime.
Well, this is a little bit of a bittersweet moment, and thank you for your comments, Counselman Cobb. Thank you to everyone else who made a favorable remark. I'm not big on, you know, the song and dance stuff, so what I am going to promise you is that there are quite a few transitional things that need to be addressed, and rather than trying to go through chapter and verse tonight, I'm promising you that when it's appropriate, especially during the budget season, you'll see and hear a lot from me, there's a lot to transfer, there's a lot that needs to be dealt with, a lot that needs to be carried forward, and I'm promising you to be a part of whatever that transition means. So Kevin, I'm offering my time, some of my time, I'm looking at Valerie while I'm looking at you, I'm offering some of my time to you as you need it. There are a couple of things, and before I wish everyone a happy holiday in whatever form you celebrate, there are a couple of things that I want to share with you that you need to keep on your radar screens. One is, I mentioned the budget. The budget reflects the priorities of this council. Make sure they know what your priorities are before decisions get made. Keep an eye on the debt. Not enough attention gets paid to it, and it can creep up, and it has crept up, and we've done a decently good job, and, you know, I appreciate Counselman Cobb being there at my side of, you know, shouting out about the debt and what we can do to, to change things around, and we have made a difference. So that difference needs to continue, and that pressure needs to come from you. So do your part. There are also a couple of things that you need to pay attention to. We received an allocation of ARPA funds from the federal government that need to be spent. You need to know how those dollars get spent. There's been very little to note discussion about them. There have also been allocations, for the past couple of years, we've gotten a half-million-dollar check from the Englewood Hospital, and that money's- And that money's gone into the budget. It's important that you understand where that money's going, how it's going to be spent, how it gets used. It can't just go into surplus and vanish and disappear into the night. We also, in August, got a half million dollar check from VITUS. Get to know that name. VITUS is a company that is responsible, you know, they signed a long-term lease with us to rehab Parkview and Rock Creek, as Councilman Cobb spoke of a little while ago. Every year, there will be a, a check coming into the city and it's going to be used for community benefit issues, particularly, you know, those communities that, those communities that, you know, are, were impacted, you know, Parkview and Rock Creek. So make sure you understand, you know, what those dollars are and how they get used. So I'm cautiously optimistic about Inglewood, very optimistic about, you know, what can happen here. But the caution is because if people aren't involved, things can go a little bit sideways. Stay involved. This is your city. Make it happen the way it needs to happen. Anyway, I do wish you all, each and every one of you, glorious holiday season, however you celebrate. COVID isn't over. I've been saying that for two years. Make sure you take care of your friends and your family and yourselves. God bless all of you. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I wish everyone a happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa and a merry Christmas. I want to thank you for allowing me to serve as the city council president this past year. And thank you to Ms. Marin for her comments. It's been an extraordinarily productive year. We've had more ordinances passed this year than we did in the past two years combined and the most in over a decade. So it's been a very, very productive council and thank you for allowing me to lead that. And it wouldn't have gotten done without some of the people up here on stage. And so I want to thank Ms. Melendez, who I believe went home with the cake, Ms. Wazamass, Mr. Hoffman and Mr. Bailey. They've been a constant source of support in helping the council move forward and getting a lot done this year. And it couldn't have happened without them, you know, in the tremendous accomplishments of the year 2022. So thank you again for, for all your help this year. Once again, congratulations on the years of service to Councilmen Cohen and Hamer. You will be missed up here and I wish you all the best of luck, happiness and health in the years to come with your families and your other endeavors. And I wish everyone a happy and a healthy new year and I hope to see you back here on January 3rd at 6:30 for the reorganizational meeting where we'll swear in the two new council people to begin their careers. Thank you and good night.
What? Thank you very much, council president. I'd like to wish everybody a happy Hanukkah, a merry Christmas, a good Kwanzaa and a happy and healthy 2023. Inglewood is fortunate to have had the dedicated stewardship of Councilman Cohen and Councilman Hamer for these past several years. I wish them and their families all the best as they enter into the next chapter of their lives. It's also been a pleasure to get to know our department heads, our staff, residents and businesses over the past five months, and I look forward to working collaboratively to continue the process of improving the way we deliver services to our residents. On behalf of the city, I want to publicly thank John Lee and the Soul Trading Company for their generous donation. They recently gave two checks to the city. For the past several years, the Soul Trading Company has made donations to the city. These donations have been used for public celebrations. We're grateful to have such public-minded corporate citizens helping our city. And I just want to wish everybody the best and be safe over this holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. So now we will move to public session. So this is, anyone from the public who would like to address the council regarding any issue, please step to the mic, name and address for the record and two minutes to speak.
Yeah, Rick Welby, Inglewood, New Jersey. Just got some things I want to read out the Bible. I'm not going to lean on my own understanding tonight. This is for Wayne and Cohen. For if a man thinks himself to be something when he is nothing, he deceiveth himself. But let every man prove his own work and then shall he have rejoicing in himself alone and not in another. For every man shall bear his own burden. Let him that is taught in the word communicate unto him that teaches in all good things. Be not deceived. God is not mocked. For whatsoever a man soweth, that shall he also reap. Isaiah 14:21. Prepare slaughter for his children for the iniquity of the Father, that they do not rise nor possess the land, nor fill the face of the world with cities. And finally Ezekiel 21:24. Therefore, thus saith the Lord God, because you have made your iniquity to be remembered and that your transgressions are discovered, that in all your doings your sins do appear. Because I say that ye are come to remembrance, ye shall be taken with the hand. I know everybody feels a certain kind of way about Inglewood, but I got a very different story about Inglewood. Charles likes to talk about Inglewood born and raised. I've seen many Inglewood born and raised destroy Inglewood. I've seen them destroy Inglewood. To me, born and raised in Inglewood doesn't mean anything. My father came here from Jamaica back in 1975. He could not have those opportunities in 2022. And it's because of the decisions that a lot of people that look like me, that were born and raised here, did to this community. Rock Creek and Parkview, those residents are being pushed out daily, daily. So I don't know what kind of power or what kind of progress you think you've accomplished, but you've accomplished nothing.
My name is, my name is Gabrielle Brucebee. I live at 296 Thornton Road in Inglewood, New Jersey. I, I think that as a, as a council, you have accomplished a lot and I want to express my appreciation for all of the work you do on behalf of Inglewood citizens. I especially want to express my appreciation to my dear friend Michael Cohen for all of the work he's done over the past eight or nine years.
Twelve.
Twelve years or whatever. It takes a lot of dedication and selflessness to be on a council, to move a city forward. I wasn't born and raised in Inglewood. I was born and raised in Morocco, Africa, but I've been privileged to live in this city for 20 years. It's a beautiful city and we thank you again for all of your work. I would also to express my appreciation to Mr. Hamer for your work. And I want to also wish good luck to our new council members and hope that they will continue pushing the city forward. Thank you again.
Peach Anson, 589 Regentland Terrace. I live in the second ward. And anytime I had a problem, I mentioned this last meeting, I, I called Mr. Cohen, he always responded. If he didn't get back to me, he got back to me the next day. And I appreciate his service throughout my living in the second ward while he was councilman. Second, I would like to, to thank Wayne Hamer for 16 years. When I started videoing and live streaming city council meetings, he was the president. And it wasn't immediately apparent to me at the time, but over time, I came to realize with the grace and ease at which he sat at the, at the, at the head as president of this council. And if we could go back and look at those tapes and just look at how he sat and presided and how he responded, we could all learn a little bit. And I thank him for that because I learned a lot coming to the meetings, learning how the city works and understanding how we can all get involved. So thank you for your service and good luck to the incoming council people. Thank you.
William Fumore, work at Department of Public Works. This year in May, I came before you all asking you about Juneteenth. And I wanted for it to be celebrated and recognized in the city of Inglewood. And I waited month after month, waiting for something to come up in the council, for it to be passed. And month after month, nothing happened. And now, you know, I just wanted to know how come it never came up as an ordinance for anything or for it to be ever voted on? Because I, it wasn't a DPW thing, it was for the whole entire city of Inglewood to recognize it. I was there for the celebration. There was a lot of great speeches for some of you at the council who actually spoke about it, but nothing was passed or mentioned about it. And it's already been, you know, it's been recognized by, you know, federally, it's been recognized by the state. I believe the county employees are, I mean, even they, that's being recognized. But the city of Inglewood, the town that I worked for, doesn't recognize it. And like I said, it's not a DPW thing. We want the entire city to recognize that, you know, as a federal and as a state holiday. Also, I don't feel that as far as the department, that we should have to give up one of our state holiday that we have off in exchange for Juneteenth. I just, you know, I don't think that that's right. I think that it should be celebrated and I think that it should be up for a vote at least. And like I said, it's been a couple of months and no one has voted up, no one has brung it up. And it's going to move into the third year of Juneteenth in the city of Inglewood and nothing has happened. So I would just at least like a vote to come up for the council maybe next month so that it can be celebrated.
Thank you. At, at the end, we let everyone's, no, no, we let everyone speak and then we address at the end. Thank you very much.
Strasfeld, 256 Epps Avenue. First of all, I've never been to one of these meetings and thank you so much for everything you do. I didn't know that was such a complicated job. There's so much that goes into this, to this job. I, I live on Epps, my parents lived on Epps and I have a school that Michael mentioned and we had that terrible flood and we suffered well over a million dollars and it was my own personal house and everything and I, whenever I called Mike, he always helped me. And I texted Wayne Hamer in my aggravation. He, he replied very, very calmly. I appreciate that very much and really help of the city so much. I can't thank you enough. For just one, one quick thing, if you could just update us on the bridge on Forest Avenue, the corner there, that's, that's been blocked up and now the street of Epps Avenue is, is getting, is pretty, is pretty busy because of that. Thank you so much again for everything. Thank you so much, Michael, and good luck. Thank you, Mr. Hamer, and good luck to you.
At the end, we'll go over.
Okay, Allen Trustee, 33 Florence Street, Inglewood. Councilman Cohen, thank you for everything that you've done. Wayne Hamer, Councilman Hamer, I can't say enough about you, buddy. Because I'll tell you something, I live on Florence Street, everyone, and the worst house in Inglewood was on Florence Street, okay? And Councilman Hamer got together, the mayor involved, the mayor knows, he got involved, Charlie Cobb, people got involved here. This man was a maniac. He went around on Fridays, collecting garbage, bringing it by the household. I mean, when I came out my front door, this is what I could look at. I had an argument with this man, it took a back and forth to court, couldn't get it out. Councilman Hamer, I've been there since 2003, okay? This man came up, got together, got him out of there, the house got rebuilt, redone, it's beautiful. Okay, my whole block is nice right now. Thank you, Councilman Hamer. I really don't miss you, I'll tell you that right now. Hopefully, the councilman is coming in there and I'll be able to do something with him too. The other thing is...
Can you speak into the mic just so that...
Talking, talking with my wife, okay? She wanted to say to the chief of police, and I've been in contact with him also, I believe that Inglewood will be diverse more. What my wife and I look for is some leadership from female, whether it be Hispanic, whether it be black, but a female. Because we don't see any. And we believe that women have the right to do a man's job, but we don't see it. I mean, and if we're going to bring in some sergeants, some lieutenants, some, maybe one of them has passed the test in order to move forward. But we would like to see females evolve, what's going on here in Inglewood, that starts it, you know? So this is what we would like to see and, and I want to make sure that we have a voice in finding out who passed the test, who's getting the job. Because when we go out, we like to speak to our police officers also. So we want to see that. Wanted to reflect what Inglewood really is. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Brenda Thomas, 93, West Inglewood Avenue. And thank you, Wayne Hamer, for being my councilman. I appreciate everything you've done and will continue to do. Thank you. I wanted to, I was thinking about this as I was walking over. I really think we need to pay closer attention to pedestrian safety, especially in downtown. I think we need to look at the four-way, both-way walk signals. I, I'm afraid that motorists are very careless and it's troublesome to me. There are also some situations, especially on Palisade Avenue in the business district, where traffic signals are, are blocked by trucks that are making deliveries. On Dean Street, Demarest and Dean is a very dangerous intersection for a pedestrian because the, the signals are not visible to everybody. So I, I really think that greater attention needs to be paid to pedestrian traffic. And similarly, in the winter, the way the streets are plowed, the sidewalks are blocked on, I know on Inglewood Avenue, and it's very difficult to navigate. You are forced into the street. So there's, to me, the cars are really taken care of, but the pedestrians are not. And not everybody in Inglewood drives everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Jack Silbermann, 320 Murray Avenue in Inglewood. Sorry about that. I'm the environmental commission, I've been passing out some people honey from the latest harvest and I've got about 20 bottles here to give out and I'm going to give some to the council as well. This is basically, it's a complimentary, it's basically to, the hives are producing honey in, in the Third Street Garden last couple of years. The hives were wiped out September, on the September 1st storm, so it took a while to get everything back. They were turned over. Essentially, we had like three feet of water in that area near McKay Park, so that's what caused that issue. What was I saying? So they're, they're basically to, to let people know that we have an issue, that... that bees are in real trouble right now. Honeybees are being taken care of. But it's because there's money in husbandry of honeybees. But it's native bees that are the ones that are really in danger right now. And those are the bees that are solitary bees in everybody's yards. We don't even, you don't even know it until you see they're tiny little things that look like tiny flies. But those are actually bees. And those are under real threat. And they do all the pollinating during the times that the honeybees do not do any, that are not pollinating on the edges of the seasons. So anyway, this is all just basically raising awareness. And we're encouraging people to install their own, if they have enough room and are interested in a hobby, to install hives in their yards. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for the honey. All right. So we close the public session now. So that's a wrap on 2022. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry. Wait, 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 wait. I'm sorry. That's my mistake. I'm very sorry. Mr. Cohen, you want to talk about Juneteenth?
I just wanted to quickly say to the gentleman, actually, you know, one thing that I was very proud of was the first resolution that I voted on this council back in 2011, I believe it was, was actually recognizing Juneteenth for the city of Inglewood. So that vote was taken in 2011. There is a resolution. The resolution actually, when my days working in the New York Senate, when we passed, we passed in 2010, we actually took exactly the New York State language and made it reflect Inglewood. So I know there are other issues now in terms of days off and these kind of issues, which the new council will have to determine. But in terms of this council recognizing Juneteenth and having a vote on the books to recognize Juneteenth, I'm proud to say that as of 2011, that has been the case. And I want to, in that, thank Joe Hoyle for all his work on all the Juneteenth celebrations all these years as well. Because it's one thing to pass a resolution. It's another thing to do what Joe did in terms of making a real celebration. So Joe, thank you for that as well.
Thank you. And Rabbi Strassfeld asked about the bridge on Forest.
I have an update if you'd like.
Yeah, please.
Okay, thank you. I have good news about the bridge on Forest Avenue. On last Friday, there was a meeting with the construction company that's going to be doing the Jones Road overpass on Route 4. That company has also been given, just given a contract from the county. They're going to be doing emergency repairs in the middle of January on the Forest Avenue Bridge. They anticipate that the bridge will be open by the end of January. We're just waiting for confirmation on the start date. But the Forest Avenue Bridge will be open before they start the main construction work on the route, on the Jones Road Bridge over Route 4. So it's coming soon. And yeah, that's good news for everybody.
Okay, so that's a wrap on 2022. So a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor? Aye. Thank you all for coming. A happy and a healthy year.
Bill, do we have a executive session or no?
No.
Are you going tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so we don't need to do a therapy.